Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Board of Education Special Meeting this Thursday, March 26, 2020 at 6:00 PM. We will start with a silent prayer and then followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. I will have Dr. Ruffin give the memorial. Everyone stand, please.
At this time, we would like to keep in prayer and memory the following who have passed away. Jasleen Pizarro, an eight-year-old student at Walsh Elementary, passed away unexpectedly on March 6. Eileen Byron, longtime retired teacher, who passed away on March 6. William Nardozzi, former math teacher at Willby High School and Kennedy High School, who passed away on March 22. Let's keep them in thought and prayer.
The Pledge of Allegiance, everyone.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Brown?
Here.
Vice President Harvey?
Here.
Commissioner Hernandez? Commissioner Orso?
Commissioner Orso?
Here.
Commissioner Serrano O'Dorno?
I'm going to be in a board meeting.
Commissioner Stango?
Here.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Here.
Commissioner Jason Vanstone?
Present.
Commissioner Tom Vanstone? President Pagano?
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for joining in for this meeting. This is, again, a special meeting because there are items that need to be taken care of and voted on today. So this is why we are here. As you are all aware, we are under a new climate now, and we are practicing social We have five or four, yes, five commissioners present in person, and we have five who are joining us by phone. All right? We have in-person, I'll include myself, Commissioner Brown, Commissioner Jason Vanstone, Commissioner Sweeney, and Commissioner Stango, again, in person. Via the phone, we have joining us President Pagano, Commissioner Tom Vanstone, Commissioner Hernandez, and Commissioner Orso. So, and also, I neglected to mention, forgive me, Dr. Ruffin. Dr. Ruffin is here with us, and we have our clerk, Carrie Swain. So, again, this is the new normal. So, in order to maintain order, the first thing I'm going to ask is that the commissioners who are on the phone, to please mute your lines so that there are no distracting noises to interrupt the meeting. I'm also asking that everything is through the chair. If you wish to speak, to address the chair. All right? Any motions that are made, I'm asking that the persons that are present in person make those motions. And when we go through the discussion, because everything will be via roll call, when we have a discussion, I will first acknowledge those who are present, and then I will call upon the commissioners who are on the phone so that we're not talking over each other. I will call you individually by name to ask you if you have comments or you have to wish to join into the discussion. Everything will be done by roll call vote. I'm asking that you keep, and I'm respectfully asking that you keep your comments brief during discussion and any comments that you wish to make. And again, this is a learning process. This is something we've never been, we have never been here before, so it's a learning process. There will be adjustments that will be made, but the main, again, to remind you, the main point of this meeting, it's a special meeting, is to go and to vote on the items that are listed on the agenda. All right? So with that, I will ask for Commissioner Brown, if you could please make a motion for communications.
Thank you. Make a motion to accept the communications as listed. Pardon me? Is there saying there's no video or audio going across? There's no video.
No, they're not going to see. It's just audio.
Not seeing it. Just voice. On television. Oh, okay.
Okay, just audio. Okay, Commissioner Brown?
Hi, yes. Number four, communications, make a motion to accept communications as listed and place on file.
I need a second.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion? Discussion, President Pagano? Any comments?
None for me.
All right. Commissioner Tom, thank you. Tom Vanstone? Okay. Commissioner Hernandez?
Hernandez?
Commissioner Orso?
Going to be.
Okay, thank you. All right. All those in favor indicate, believe we have to do roll call?
Yes. Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Vice President Harvey?
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Orso?
All right.
Commissioner Serrano O'Dorno?
Yes.
Commissioner Stango?
Yes.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Yes.
Commissioner Jason Vanstone?
Yes.
Commissioner Tom Vanstone?
Yes.
President Pagano?
Okay. Motion has been made and approved. Next, I will ask for approval of the meeting minutes, February 6, 2020, the workshop, and February 20, 2020, the regular meeting. I need a motion, please.
Motion to approve the minutes of February 6, 2020, workshop, and February 20, 2020, regular meeting.
Thank you. I need a second.
Second.
Discussion? Any discussion? President Pagano? Tom Vanstone?
None for me.
Tom Vanstone?
No.
No, no discussion.
Thank you. Commissioner Hernandez?
No.
Commissioner Orso? Commissioner Ordano? Okay. We'll move on. All right. Can we have a roll call vote? All right. Roll call vote, roll call, please.
This is on the minutes. Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Vice President Harvey?
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Vice President Harvey? Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Orso?
Yes.
Commissioner Serrano O'Dorno? Commissioner Stango?
Yes.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Yes.
Commissioner Jason Vanstone?
Yes.
Commissioner Tom Vanstone?
Yes.
President Pagano?
Okay. Motion passes. We're asking you to be patient with us. There seems to be a slight delay when responding, so just bear with us. All right. So let's move on to item number six, superintendent's announcement. Dr. Ruffin?
Thank you, Commissioner. Although there are several slides that are presented here tonight, I'm going to spend all of our time talking about the events that occurred beginning on the evening of March 12 to the present. When a decision was made on the evening of March 12 to close schools beginning on March 13. It was done with much conversations with a number of stakeholders throughout the state of Connecticut as well as nationally. From the Connecticut State Department of Ed to the governor's office, from the guidance of our commissioners, with several other members of very important groups that would inform school districts as well as the entire state of the status of the COVID-19 and its potential impact if we acted slowly or if we did nothing. After very much information, some of which was very vague because we didn't know what we were getting ready to encounter, also involved the CDC, the Department of Health, both on the national, the state, and the local level, much collaboration on, with many groups, including local and state governments and local and state agencies. A decision was made that our school was going to close, and it was going to reopen or not reopen again until March 20. And then, through various other meetings, it was moved to March 31. And to continued meetings, it was through April 20. And as we are today, we don't know beyond that. All we know is April 20 is the projected day of return, and many people are hearing different things, but directives or the guidance that we have received thus far allows us to be able to know that we are preparing for something that will occur at least until April 20. During that time, there are many people working behind the scenes every day. A number of staff members reported to work in a central office on the 13th, but as time went on, that too changed into an online platform. There was caution nationally and, of course, within our state to work from home or to go into some kind of virtual meeting, and social distancing became a terminology that we're all too familiar with and that we see in meetings that we might attend virtually as well as in person, that that has made a tremendous impact on the way that we communicate with each other. So that changed a lot of things. It changed the way that we were going to think about distance learning, which was at one time a term that was loosely used to online learning, to making certain that all of students had access to virtual learning. And while that is certainly something that we are working on and we're working very diligently on, just to say that we have online learning and virtual learning doesn't occur simply by just indicating that that's going to happen. For Waterbury, and Waterbury in particular, a virtual learning platform would mean that all of our students would have access to online, and that is not something that we are currently situated, positioned to be able to implement. However, we have, from the very beginning, some resources that were placed online for all of our students and families to access, that was communicated to our families, plus we began to prepare instructional packets designed to help students to stay connected to learning while they were at home for an undetermined amount of time. Those packets were a part of what we were going to do when we knew we were going to have school closures, at least for a few days. It is now something that we are planning on doing long-term for an undetermined amount of time. Additionally, the website that was posted very early on that has online materials is consistently updated. We still have a challenge of having every single student having access to online learning, which is why Waterbury will continue to have both, even as we are designing and building an online platform that will become for us what we will implement as virtual learning for our entire district. I want to back up a little because, in addition to that, we also recognize that we were working with four different and very distinct unions. And before we were able to execute a plan, we had to make certain that we were answering and responding to a number of needs and a number of union contracts that are in place that required consistent work and conversations between various offices and union members to rethink of what this contract might look like moving forward, as we had a number of employee groups. Some of our employees are part-time, some of our employees are full-time but working with a grant, some of our employees work with students and attendants, some of our employees work with students and tutor, some of our employees are hourly, some of our employees are salaried. And so it became a very complex, very complex work to make certain that everybody's answer was going to be provided, but not everyone's answer was the same. And so the conversation started immediately with our various unions. We were able to respond, we were able to, for the majority of our staff, maintain employment, but yet some staff were not able to due to the very nature of the work and the fact that we no longer had students in schools. And so we communicated that, we continue to communicate that. We can communicate that on a daily basis, and we've made available websites and email addresses so that questions can consistently come in, and we respond usually within a 24-hour period. And I know that because most of those responses, especially on the central office at waterbury.k12.ct.us, I answer personally. And there has been two days when I did not respond in a 24-hour period because I was extremely backlog. But there's also another website, which is WPS Academics, that is another. I'll share more with that with you later. So that began, that begins the conversation about employee work groups and what that might look like in the future. We have been in conversations and working through the contracts with WTA and with SAW, and that is near, hopefully, completion. That is where we are going to assure that our teachers and our principals and our administrators in the schools, who are no longer in the schools, are able to virtually communicate and connect with parents and students, as well as what happens if the virtual environment is not available. So that describes the contact that a teacher might have with a student beyond just a platform that we are now calling online learning, which is being developed. And once that contract, once those agreements have been fully reached, then there's an expectation, for me as superintendent, that our teachers and our principals will make direct contact with students on an online platform, and for those students that still do not have the capacity, then we're able to connect with them either by telephone or by the worksheets that are going home and the packets, and be able to give some meaningful feedback to students based on the work that they are doing. I will tell you that everything is quite fluid. There's nothing that's engraved in stone that says that we have completed this task because it is a work in progress. I know I've received a number of emails and a number of comments about why isn't Waterbury doing what these districts are doing. Well, Waterbury is not poised to distribute an iPad or a computer to every single student in our district. To complicate matters, even if we could, our families do not all have access to the internet, and our families, although they would have a computer, could not say that they would access the online learning because without the internet access, they would not be able to access the online learning. I will foresee that regardless of the platform that we develop, even if it's three weeks or six weeks or ongoing, we will always continue to have both the online, kind of a blended learning, a combination of online and not online, paper, and then also the package or something equivalent. Although today, we do not have the instructional packets that are also the same thing as the online, we plan, moving forward, that when we develop our own line learning platform, we will have the take-home packets that will be aligned to what the students are also receiving electronically for equity. At this time, that is all being developed. It is not developed in its completion, and we're not saying that we are even close, but what we are close to is that today, had a meeting with our principals and had a meeting with some of our senior cabinet to talk about what we need to do to begin rolling this out. Some of our teachers have already been establishing these classrooms in what's called a Google Classroom setting. They've already done that. We've encouraged them to continue. We have also encouraged our teachers and, moving forward after conversations with the union, to make certain that all of our teachers have conversations with the students, so what is learning going to look like for you? And whether it's an online, and we develop the lessons and the teachers post them to the Google platform, which is what we will be using in Waterbury, we also have a number of other resources that we have available, and I'll give you a few examples. One, we know that if a student is currently taking a class that is a dual enrollment class between Waterbury and UConn, that class should have continued because that class could, in fact, be implemented between the teacher, who is also a teacher, that teaches for the university as well as for the school district, so that learning can be continuous. When colleges began to close, they began to say that their platform would be online learning. So that, to me, is one of the easier ways to continue the learning for a student that may have been learning for a dual credit course. Additionally, we have some resources, such as our advanced placement classes. We've purchased a lot of resources and curriculum and instruction this last year, and we want to make certain that the curriculum that we've purchased is going to be something that we can continually use because we do not want to frustrate people by having yet another flavor of the muff. So to be able to take those lessons and place them in an online platform that teachers create because teachers know how to do this, or will be learning how to do this, and we do not have everyone at the same place, but once teachers learn from other teachers that are already doing it, we see this as an evolving platform that will become our distance learning for Waterbury Public Schools. Most recently, two days ago, the governor and the commissioner of education identified a task force to work on computers and resources, material resources that were being donated throughout the state of Connecticut. Over 60,000 computers will be donated for the alliance districts. I am very pleased that I am one of the five, one of the six superintendents participating with others on this particular task force, which is charged for being able to problem-solve and to think through, how would alliance districts be able to better use these computers to move forward with online learning in their districts? Because alliance districts typically would be districts that would not have those resources readily available, or they may not have a philanthropic donor who is going to give this to a particular city, as sometimes people are comparing us with, but we're not there. So we are very pleased that the, through the generosity of the partnership, that those 60,000 computers will be distributed at some point after the task force determines some of the best practices that this work can move forward. It has been determined that the high schools will be the first recipients of these computers. So when you think of 60,000 computers for 33 alliance districts in the state of Connecticut, then we need to determine how many computers would that be if all of the ninth through 12th graders in all of the alliance districts receive a share of those 60,000 computers. If Waterbury were to receive comparable computers for all of our seniors, for all of our seniors only, that would be slightly over 1,000 computers for our seniors alone. And then, of course, the computers are not only for seniors, they're for ninth, 10, 11, and 12th grade. It was also stated that through this generosity of our philanthropic community, that we would also receive books or workbooks that are going to be contributed by scholastics. And it appears that those books are going to be books that students can have, they can keep them, it's theirs, and they would be an extension to their learning. It would be a supplement, but it would be available to pre-K through eighth grade. Therefore, the resources would be online for ninth, 10, 11, and 12th graders, and then the resources for pre-K through eighth grade, even if they did not have a computer, would have the resources through the scholastics. And that's what the task force is charged to do, to work on what might that look like to distribute both the computers and the scholastic books to the 33 districts that are alliance districts in Connecticut. As I said, today was our very first meeting. We have other things and assignments that we are doing before our next meeting, which will be held next week. It's anticipated that even with the donation of the computers, even with the 60,000 computers that we will be getting, that the earliest we could possibly expect computers would be from three to six weeks. So in the interim, I know Waterbury is working to make certain that we have a plan that we could begin rolling out before the three to six weeks, but at the same time, the actual computers that will be coming in through this donation could possibly take three to six weeks for the actual delivery. In the interim, we will continue to work on the platform for delivery. We will work on our internal plans for what we could do in the interim to make certain our students are still learning. We will anticipate, moving forward, with our teachers and our principals to make the connection with families, and we also want to have a reliable source to say, by school, by teacher, how many of the children actually have a computer? And then the other part of that is how many of them have access to the internet? Because in the absence of the internet, in the absence of that connectivity, that becomes a challenge for someone to actually do online learning. We will always supplement and continue to do packets for the students regardless of the direction that we will move on with online learning. Also, we want to make certain that our teachers have the professional development that they will need as they're creating these Google classrooms and they're creating the work that will be placed there so that students can receive the instruction that they need. We are highly cognizant of the fact that our students, that are English language learners and our special education students, require some additional supports, and while we have gotten some guidance from the special education, the majority of our guidance for special education indicates that we cannot provide the kind of services that are in the original IEPs due to the nature of the fact that we are not physically in touch with our students. However, there are ways that we can mitigate that. There are ways that teachers and students can connect, if it's an online platform or not an online platform. not an online platform. But it is highly necessary that as we move forward, and whenever we do return to school, we will be looking at the compensatory education to provide additional services and supports to our children so that that can be successful. And that is a very high priority with us. What that will look like in the next week or two weeks, I do not know, but everybody on the working team is working very hard to address all of those needs. And I can't tell you what that would look like because we are literally creating this. And we're not alone. There are other districts throughout the state of Connecticut that are also working on it, but there are varying degrees of advancement, anywhere from not advanced at all to maybe a few that could be advanced, but the majority are not. And we're working on this and sharing ideas. We're sharing resources. We've gotten a lot of resources from the State Department. We've shared resources online that we can share with our teachers and staff. But again, the sharing with one another is very important, and it's proven to be a really good way to spread out some of the talent across the state, but we're all learning together. And so that, that's probably not all I could share with you right now, but I will stop in case you have questions relative to what we're doing. Again, the numbers that people will be seeing on the slide and the email addresses there, those are being answered, and we're getting a lot of repeated questions, and a lot of them about the technology, but also students concerned about graduation. You know, I do want to say that part of that plan is to get our seniors into the learning as quickly as possible so that we can definitely answer their questions and move them forward with the learning so that they are not going to be behind, and then we will continue to develop everything else. There's been rumors that students are going to fail, and that's absolutely unsubstantiated. That is totally false. You know, and it's very hard for anybody to even predict what could happen in June because we're still in March. And so I would just continue to reiterate that we're all in this together, that we're all having challenges with something that we're building and creating, and I believe that it will result in some real positive learning and some positive platforms, but we're still creating them as we go.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Ruffin. What I believe I'm going to do so that we can, I know the commissioners have questions, I'm going to ask that you hold those questions, and then we'll address those questions towards the end when we open it up for discussion or any questions pertaining to new items, et cetera. All right? So with that, so commissioners, save your questions, and we will get to them a little bit later on. I just want to move the meeting along and vote on what we have to vote on. So President Pagano, did you have any comments?
Yes, and thank you, President Vice President Harvey, and thank everyone who's there. Can you hear me okay? Hello?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Just two quick things.
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, just two quick things I want to get on and pass on my thanks and kudos to Dr. Ruffin and her leadership and her entire staff's tenacity and focus on this most incredible period of our history. I think I'm speaking for the board. We appreciate your leadership, and we thank you for being there. You're doing a hell of a job. Number two, I would just like to thank each and every one of the commissioners for being here tonight, even though as difficult it might be to begin with on this initial virtual meeting, this is a learning opportunity. And for the sake of safety, I think it's the right way of doing things, and I just want to yell out and make sure that everyone's staying safe and healthy with their families and not taking any chances. That's all I had to say for it, and then we'll go to the next agenda item.
Just hold your questions for Dr. Ruffin, and we will just have those questions later on, give you a chance for that. So I will move on to item number eight, Committee on School Personnel. Commissioner Stengel, please.
Thank you. Item 8.1 regarding the Kennedy High School principal appointment. Ladies and gentlemen, with the approval of the Committee on School Personnel, the superintendent of Schools recommends approval of the appointment of George T. Smalley as the high school principal assigned to Kennedy High School, high school vice principal, I'm sorry, assigned to Kennedy High School effective April 6, 2020, respectfully submitted and so moved.
Second. Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion. Dr. Ruffin.
Thank you, Commissioner. George Smalley is being recommended as assistant principal at Kennedy, having gone through the necessary interview committees. He brings to the table experience and success in increasing and improving graduation rates as well as working with counselors as he has served as a director of guidance in many districts. He also brings to the table the ability to work with students that are most at risk in reducing out-of-school suspension as well as placing them on a plan so that they can see that there's hope in completing their graduation requirements. He has been responsible for PSAT, SAT, ACT, and AP testing as well as has participated on an administrative team. I think that he is the person that is going to be able to address some of the needs that we have at our high schools, and also after conferring with the principal, as I do in all of the other cases, this is the gentleman that I'm recommending as assistant principal of Kennedy High School.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Ruffin. We're still in discussion. I will first ask if there's any discussion from the commissioners here. All right? If not, I will ask any commissioners on the phone. President Pagano, any questions?
President Pagano? Any questions?
None for me.
Any comments?
I lost you for, this is Commissioner Orso. I lost you for a couple.
Okay, we're waiting for Commissioner Hernandez.
No, I lost.
Commissioner Orso.
I lost you for a second.
Thank you.
I have no.
Thank you. Commissioner Orso.
Is Mr. Smalley from within our, is George within our system or is he outside the system?
You so? Commissioner Ordono.
No question.
Thank you. I'll try again. Commissioner Tom Van Stone, did you have any further discussion on this motion?
Not on this topic, but there's still a lot of open mics causing a lot of audio issues.
All right. Then we will go for roll call.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Vice President Harvey?
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Serrano O'Dorno?
Yes.
Commissioner Stango? Commissioner Sweeney?
Yes.
Commissioner Jason Van Stone?
Yes.
Commissioner Tom Van Stone?
Yes.
Yes.
10-0, motion passes.
All right. Motion passes. We can kind of give a clap, folks. All right. I'm the only one clapping. Okay. So moving on. All right. So moving on, we'll move on to the consent, and congratulations. Moving on to the consent calendar, are there any items to be removed from the consent calendar? Commissioner Stengel.
I would like to remove 9.1 from the consent calendar, please.
Any items to be removed for our commissioners on the phone? Hearing nothing. I, okay, we will move on. I will read the consent calendar. We have removed, just to repeat, we have removed item 9.1 per the request of Commissioner Stengel. The consent calendar is as follows. Committee of the whole requests approval of a Connecticut Community Colleges college facility request slash reservation agreement, item 9.2. Item 9.3, Committee on Finance requests approval of transfers in the 2019-2020 budget. Item 9.4, Committee on Building and School Facilities requests approval to file a grant application for the proposed Generali School Roof Project. Item 9.5, Committee on Building and School Facilities requests approval of the preparation of schematic drawings and outlined specifications for the proposed Generali School Roof Project. Item 9.6, Committee on Building and School Facilities requests approval of the formation of a building committee for the proposed Generali School Roof Project. Item 9.7, Committee on Building and School Facilities, use of school facilities by school organizations and/or city departments. Item 9.8, Committee on Building and School Facilities, use of school facilities by outside organizations and/or waiver requests. I need a motion to approve the consent calendar, item 9, and 9.1, and then item 9.3 through 9.8. Motion, please.
Motion to approve the consent calendar, items 9.2 through 9.8.
Thank you. 9.2, correct.
Second.
We have a motion made and seconded. Discussion. All right.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Vice President Harvey?
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Orso?
Yes.
Commissioner Serrano O'Dorno? Commissioner Stango?
Yes.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Yes.
Commissioner Jason Van Stone?
Yes.
Commissioner Tom Van Stone?
Yes. Yes, and everyone.
President Pagano?
All right. Motion carries. All right. So we had one item that was removed from the consent calendar, item 9.1, Committee of the Whole. That's Commissioner Sweeney. Thank you.
Commissioner Sweeney. Item 9.1. Ladies and gentlemen, the Committee of the Whole recommends the Waterbury Board of Education approve for students in grades 6 through 12 to participate in the Search Institute Attitudes and Behavior Survey conducted by the Waterbury Health Department.
Okay, give a second, please. Thank you. Discussion. Yes, Commissioner Stengel.
Thank you. I asked to remove this from the consent calendar because I had some concerns about the survey, concerns which I did address at workshop, and I'd like to just touch on them again for the formal record. I have four, I boiled it down to four concerns. Item one, I have concerns about the opt-out instead of the opt-in. I prefer opt-in option. Opt-in is the only way that parents will be positively informed that their child will be taking the survey. To me, opt-out falls woefully short of doing that. Item two, I have concerns about the wide range of ages of survey takers. Some questions on a survey are just not appropriate for all ages in the survey cohort of ages 11 to 19. Item three, I have concerns about the appropriateness of the questions for any age. In my opinion, some questions are extremely personal and should not be addressed in a school setting. And finally, item four, I have a new concern that wasn't at the forefront at our workshop, and that is that this survey was planned for spring admission. Certainly, the spring schedule is in upheaval currently, right now. With everything going on now, do we really want to entertain a survey going forward at any time, actually, in the foreseeable future? Having said that, though, I am heartened by some of the survey's questions. I have an example from the "who do you say you are?" section, and I'm going to paraphrase it. Do you stand up for what you believe even when it's unpopular to do so? That question is positive. It's to the point. It's simple. It's value-setting, and it's appropriate for all ages. Stand up for what you believe. And I will plan to do that with my vote tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? I'm asking the commissioners here, the president. No further discussion? Any further discussion? President Pagano?
None here.
Commissioner Tom Van Stone? Commissioner Hernandez?
Nothing for me. Thank you.
The discussion?
No question.
Thank you. Commissioner Orso? Any further discussion?
Yes, I do have a comment. Could you hear me?
Any further discussion?
Hello? This is Commissioner Orso. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Yes, we can.
Commissioner Orso?
I do have a comment. I have to totally agree with Commissioner Stengel. I believe that there should be, if you want to do a survey like this, there should be two different surveys, one for the younger children and one for the high school students. And I could not approve this. I'm sorry.
Who's speaking, please? That was who? That was?
Commissioner Orso.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much. We will have roll call vote, please.
Thank you very much. I understand some of the concerns of our students that take this.
Okay. Your mic is off, Commissioner.
I just want to remind the body that our students have taken this test, this survey in the past, and it's been very useful. I serve on our inter-district wellness committee, and this information is very valuable as we plan to meet our students' needs. And I do understand some of the concerns raised here tonight, but I think overall, the good that this survey does for our students and for the professionals who use this information to plan and respond to the needs of the students outweighs some of the concerns. So I will be supporting this tonight. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Thank you, Commissioner Brown. Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Vice President Harvey?
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Orso? Commissioner Orso?
No.
Commissioner Serrano O'Dorno? Commissioner Serrano O'Dorno? Commissioner Stango?
No.
Commissioner Sweeney?
No.
Commissioner Jason Vanstone?
Yes.
Commissioner Tom Vanstone?
No.
President Pagano?
No.
Commissioner Serrano O'Dorno?
Okay, how many do we have now? Five against four. Give me the count again, Carrie.
Five, four, without Commissioner Serrano O'Dorno.
Okay, give her one, one last time, try her.
Commissioner Serrano O'Dorno?
Okay. Okay.
Five, four, motion passes.
Five, four, motion passes.
No, motion fails.
Motion fails, excuse me. Could I have that call, the vote again, five against and four?
Five, four.
Four. Four, okay, so motion fails.
I'm sorry.
All right. Okay, moving on to item number 11. Committee on Policy and Legislation, Commissioner Sweeney? Commissioner Sweeney, your mic, please.
Commissioner Sweeney, this is item 11.1. The Committee on Policy and Legislation recommends the Waterbury Board of Education approve the new policy, Ages of Attendance Number 5112, replacing the current policy, Early Admission into Kindergarten Policy Number 5112.
You have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Discussion. The commissioners present, any discussion here? All right, I will start with President Pagano. Any discussion?
Unfor me.
Commissioner Tom, thank you. Commissioner Tom Vanstone?
Nothing.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Nothing for me.
Commissioner Orso?
Nothing, thank you.
All right, and Commissioner Ordonell? Please.
Commissioner Brown? Vice President Harvey?
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Orso?
Yes.
Commissioner Stango?
Yes.
Commissioner Sweeney? Commissioner Jason Vanstone?
Yes.
Commissioner Tom Vanstone?
Yes.
President Pagano?
Yes.
Nine, zero, motion passes.
All right, motion passes. Item 11.2, Commissioner Sweeney?
Ladies and gentlemen, the Committee on Policy and Legislation recommends the Waterbury Board of Education approve the new Building Committees Policy Number 7100.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, so second it, please. Commissioner Vanstone, okay. All right, discussion. Any discussion from the commissioners present? All right. Any discussion, President Pagano?
No.
Thank you. Commissioner Tom Vanstone, discussion?
Nothing.
Commissioner Hernandez, discussion?
No discussion.
Commissioner Orso, discussion?
Uh, no.
Thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Brown? Vice President Harvey?
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Orso?
Yes.
Commissioner Stango?
Yes.
Commissioner Sweeney? Commissioner Jason Vanstone?
Yes.
Commissioner Tom Vanstone?
Yes.
President Pagano?
Yes.
Nine, zero, motion carries.
Thank you. Motion passes. All right, item 12, Committee on Finance, Commissioner Jason Vanstone, please. Item 12.1.
Thank you, Madam Vice President, through you, item 12.1. Ladies and gentlemen, the Committee on Finance recommends that the Waterbury Board of Education approve a contract, a construction contract with Environmental Systems Corporation to provide school security video surveillance and access control system expansion and upgrades. Respectfully submitted and so moved.
You have a second? Discussion. Any discussion with the commissioners present? Okay, any discussion, President Pagano?
None for me.
Commissioner Tom Vanstone?
Nothing.
Commissioner Hernandez?
No.
Commissioner Orso?
Uh, no.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Brown? Vice President Harvey?
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Orso?
Yes.
Commissioner Stango? Commissioner Sweeney?
Yes.
Commissioner Jason Vanstone?
Yes.
Commissioner Tom Vanstone?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Nine, zero, motion passes.
Thank you. Motion passes. Item 12.2, Commissioner Jason Vanstone, please.
Thank you, Madam Vice President, through you, item 12.2. Ladies and gentlemen, the Committee on Finance recommends the Waterbury Board of Education approve an agreement with Crown Castle Fiber LLC to provide wide-area network services. Respectfully submitted and so moved.
You have a second? Discussion. Discussion for the commissioners present? Commissioner Brown?
Probably should know this, but when I read the contract, I wasn't quite sure what this really was. What is this service? Castle Fiber, is it internet service?
Okay.
Okay, so this will be for our internal school district, not outside. Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Thank you. All right, any further discussion? President Pagano? Any discussion, any comments?
No discussion for me.
Thank you. Commissioner Tom Vanstone?
Nothing.
Thank you. Commissioner Hernandez?
I'm offset, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Orso?
Uh, no.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Brown? Vice President Harvey?
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez? Commissioner Orso?
Yes.
Commissioner Stango?
Yes.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Yes.
Commissioner Jason Vanstone? Commissioner Tom Vanstone?
Yes.
President Pagano?
Yes.
Nine, zero, motion carries.
Thank you. Motion passes. All right, I need a motion to receive and place on file superintendent's notification to the board as listed on the agenda.
I make a motion to receive and place on file superintendent's notification to the board, items 13.1 through 13.9.
Second? Second. Okay, discussion? All right, I'm going to skip with the roll call on the phone. Can we have a roll, a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Brown? Vice President Harvey?
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Orso?
Yes.
Commissioner Stango?
Yes.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Yes.
Commissioner Jason Vanstone?
Yes.
Commissioner Tom Vanstone?
Yes.
President Pagano?
Yes.
Nine, zero, motion carries.
Thank you. All right, moving on to item number 14, unfinished business of proceeding meeting only. Okay. He has unfinished business, okay. Commissioner Tom Vanstone?
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Going back to Superintendent Dr. Ruffa's comments, I would like to know if he has contacted for assistance with laptops, pads, etc., with our federal and/or state elected officials, both at governor level as well as our representatives in Congress.
Repeat that.
Have you, have you contacted state or federal officials about the need for laptops and other technology?
All right, thank you.
That's correct, thank you.
Okay, if I, if I, that was for me. If I understood it correctly, have I contacted some of our state representatives? I was on the phone today with Senator Hartley and Representative Reyes. I've spoken with Representative Napoli, and yes, I, I believe all of them know what our needs are, and I'm in constant communication with them through the legislative process, through my superintendent's organization as well. So the answer to your question is yes, and, and today, on the phone calls, we were talking about what our needs were, and they ask in any way that they could be of assistance. I think they are aware that the computers alone are, are not just the answer.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Ruffin. Any more pertaining to?
Stand on the federal level, approach our folks in Congress? Yes, I do have. Part of my question, have we contacted federal elected officials in Congress?
All right, it's very difficult to, to understand what Commissioner Vanstone is saying, so can someone who understands it just kind of repeat?
I have not personally spoken with Senator Murphy, however, we have had conference calls with the Secretary of Education. We have had conversations about the impact on the federal funding that we currently have within our district, as recently as today. I had a telephone call regarding how we can begin blending some of our resources, which in the past has not really been promoted, and also with the fact that since some of our federal funding is not going to be expended by the end of the school day, how we can repurpose that to meet our needs here in Waterbury. But not with Senator Murphy, but Secretary of State and Secretary of Education, I'm sorry, and also with someone who works very closely with our federal funding within the state.
Okay. Thank you. Anything further, Commissioner? Commissioner Tom Vanstone, anything further? Okay. All right, that's no thank you. All right, any? Commissioner Brown? We are still on item number 14.
Right, and I really want to thank the superintendent and all of the wonderful staff and teachers that are really stepping up and, and really trying to meet the needs of our, our students. I did have a question from a parent today. She has a child in a school readiness program that is in one of the private programs. Are they allowed to go to our schools and pick up packets for the preschool kids?
Yes, we're not, we're not denying anyone the packets at all, or, or the meals.
Okay, great. I, I thought that would be the answer. And the other thought, looking ahead, and I, and I know you're thinking about it, but what would be the resources needed to expand summer school? Hopefully, this epidemic and this crisis is through by the end of June, in hopes of expanding or at least offering summer school programs in an expanded way. I know we always do have summer school, but I'm just hoping that maybe we could think about expanding opportunities during the summer, if, if that is even going to be conceivable, if the, if the epidemic is subsided in any way. Again, it's a resource issue, I'm sure, but I think it's something that we have to think about so that our, our kids really, at least during the summer, can have access to, you know, to learning opportunities. So if you can comment on that.
Thank you, Commissioner. Everything that, our decision at this point is also dependent upon when the, the orders are lifted and we are no longer bound to have the distancing. If it, if it is, if we are going to be returning after April 20th, then we have one scenario that we could implement. If we don't return until the end of this, end of the, what could have been a regular school year, that does bring in another set of scenarios that we are working on about how we would have to rethink our summer school and also our bridge programs for our fifth graders going to sixth, our sixth graders moving on, our eighth graders going to high school. That, that changes all of that if we're able to return in the summer, as well as the way that we interact and we provide summer programs for our students that will need some kind of compensatory resources during, for special needs, as well as our ELL students. However, if we're not, and, and I want to back up just a little bit, Commissioner, we, we can make that happen. It's not because we will not have the resources to make that happen, it's just a matter of can we make that happen because will we be able to return by then? If, and then the third scenario would happen, would, that we are thinking and rethinking and planning is what happens if we cannot return until August? And we have not gotten as far as to say what would happen if we missed that much with face-to-face interaction or online learning with our students, what that might look like for the year 2021.
Through the chair, one more question. In terms of the technology and the on-learning, distance learning and the platforms and so forth, I think your survey, you're doing your survey.